Thank you for allowing me to use that. Okay, before we get started, I do want to remind folks that part of our ongoing efforts to make our meetings more accessible, we do offer live Spanish translation at our meetings. So for those joining us in person, you will need to use your own device and earphones to listen or to read the translation. And you could simply scan the QR code that you see on signs in the boardroom. And there's, I see those two back there by the door. If you're joining virtually, you can listen to and read the live transcript of the meeting in Spanish via Zoom. Simply select Spanish as the language in your settings. Meeting agendas in Spanish are available on your, on our website. Staff in the boardroom are available to translate public comment if needed. And this is just one of the ways in which we are trying to make our meetings and our county more accessible to everyone. And Yasmin, would you come up and make those notes in Spanish, please? Thank you.
Absolutely. Buenos dias. Quería recordar a la gente como parte de nuestros esfuerzos para hacer nuestras reuniones más accesibles. Ofrecemos traducción al español en vivo en todas las reuniones de la junta de supervisores. Para aquellos que nos acompañan en persona, tendrá que utilizar su propio dispositivo y auriculares para escuchar o leer la traducción. Simplemente escanea el código QR que está en la sala de juntas. Y para los que unen virtualmente, pueden escuchar y leer la traducción en directo de reunión en español a través de Zoom. Solo tiene que seleccionar el idioma español en la configuración. Las agendas de las reuniones en español están disponibles en nuestro sitio web y el persona está en la sala de juntas para traducir los comentarios del público si es necesario. Gracias.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Can we have the call? Well, I am calling toward her. Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure.
Vice Chair [inaudible].
Here.
Supervisor Ramos?
Here.
Supervisor Pedrosa?
Here.
Supervisor Gregory?
Here.
Chair Gallagher?
Here. And I'd like to ask our birthday boy, Brian Bardona, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to Pet of the Week and also our Proclamations right after that. So who do we have today? Katie?
Today we have Asher.
Oh, we have Asher.
I think that this is the, one of the largest pets of the week we've had so far. Hi, Asher. And can you tell us who's with us today?
Yeah, so today I have Asher. Asher is our four-year-old Siberian Husky mix. Now, earlier somebody did mention a different breed that now I'm highly taking into consideration. He could be a Husky and Great Pyrenees mix. And we started seeing that a lot more now that he's been a little bit more social around people. He's very, very friendly. He's a social butterfly. And then he's been at the shelter since June. He was picked up from American Canyon. Asher, in my opinion, makes one of the best type of companions because he's very friendly, very social. He's medium to low maintenance when it comes to energy. But if you are an active individual, he would definitely make a really good companion as well because he still has the energy to go out for a hike, maybe runs. But if you want to just kind of hang out at home, go for a casual walk, that also helps. A lot of people think that because of the large breeds, you have to do a lot of exercise. But I can say from personal experience, an hour in class versus an hour in gym is very, very different. And sometimes with dogs and myself, we get really tired after just an hour of being in class. So trying to get that mental stimulus going on can be a lot better for them, especially if you don't have the time to go out for runs all the time. Asher has been at the shelter, like I said, since June. Since then, we've been able to kind of prepare him for his future home. Excuse me. He's been socialized with other dogs, both large, medium. I've introduced him to some little dogs, but he gets better along with those bigger breeds. With the stereotype of heights Siberian Huskies, usually they're known for being a little bit loud, maybe obnoxious. But this guy is none of that. He has such a good temperament, very good manners. His kennel presentation is really good. Most of the dogs that go to the shelter, rightfully so, they get overstimulated. They get really tired from being in the kennel for such a long time. This guy is so resilient because he just kind of sits there, waits for his turn, waits for a volunteer to come take him out for a walk. Even when you take him out, it's kind of hard to tell, like he's so friendly, he'll go up to anybody and you kind of start to question, wait, whose dog is this? Because he seems to love everybody. But yeah, if you are interested in a large breed, he is excellent for anybody that's looking for a new dog. If they're new to dogs or even new to the breed, he would make a really, really good companion for you. So if you want, you can come down and meet him at the shelter. And then if I may, this weekend, we are doing an adoption event at the Napa County Library from 1:00 to 4:00. So if you, Asher is not the one for you, then maybe a little Katie is going to be your companion. So come visit us at the library this Saturday.
Great. Thank you so much. And as always, the adoption fee will be waived this week if you come in and adopt. All right. Thank you so much. All right. What's the first proclamation? Thank you. Okay. We are going to first have a proclamation proclaiming September 2024 as Workforce Development Month in Napa County. And Supervisor Pedrosa is going to go ahead and present that. Thank you. And Bruce, and anyone else that wants to represent, come on up.
All right. Well, there's a lot of great words, Bruce, in this proclamation that I'm not going to read. Because I've had the honor of being able to work with you and see the work you've done. The fact that Legacy's here just reminds me of some of the programs that we were trying to do. And to me, when I think about the Workforce Alliance Board, I think about the people that you're trying to help. And this is where government should be helping, people that need an ability to connect with resources. So when I think about all these wherethes, I think about all the people, whether they're veterans or kids looking for opportunities. What the workforce did was, was that connector, that hub. And there are people that probably don't know what government is, but their first point of contact was the Workforce Alliance Board. And to me, that was the magic. Every day that you made a difference on people's lives, but also the flexibility, not just because Legacy's here, but I'm reminded of the program that we tried to run. We were trying to connect Latino kids with career opportunities, and it was going to cost an employer zero dollars. Those are the type of programs that this board was doing in the community, but also looking at regional partnerships, not just in Napa County, but all these other counties that we were trying to create opportunities to collaborate for the betterment of the people that needed those, the help the most. So again, thank you for all the work you did, to the work that the county did, to all the people that are part of the workforce staff. You all make an incredible difference. So I'm going to read one of the wherethes because I think we have to. So now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors does proclaim the 10th day of September 2024 as the Workforce Development Board. We appreciate the efforts and the significant contributions of the workforce staff, the Napa Career Partnership, and together we establish the American Job Center of California at the Napa County Health and Human Services Campus. Bruce, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. If you want to say a couple of words, here's your wonderful proclamation.
Thank you Supervisor Pedrosa, and thank you to the members of the board. Thank you. A special thank you to Supervisor Pedrosa and Supervisor Gallagher for their contributions and advocacy for workforce development for several years as members of the governing board of the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. I just want to invite you and your staff and members of the community to our grand opening at 2751 Napa Valley Corporate Drive this Thursday. It's really a reflection of Napa County coming full circle from a workforce development standpoint. It's California Human Development. It's Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act programs. It's Department of Rehabilitation, Employment Development Department. It's Health and Human Services, Employment Services Agency, doing what is needed most right now, and that's working together in a seamless and integrated fashion. So we're going to be opening up this new center. I think it's a pretty big deal. And for Workforce Development Month, I just want to assure you that certainly I am and all of the partners are committed to the continuous improvement that our job seekers and our businesses need the most at this point. So thank you again, and until next time.
here for that, please come on up. Thank you so much for coming today. I'm going to wait, I'm not going to read all of the wherethes. This is a long one, but I, this just holds a really special place in my heart. One of the very first volunteer gigs that I had in my early twenties was I worked on a suicide prevention hotline. Took a lot of training, but I did that, and it kind of opened up a whole new world to me. And so I understand the importance of suicide prevention, and it's something that, you know, we all need to be concerned about and learn about and understand. So whereas the month of September is recognized as Suicide Prevention Month, a time in which mental health advocates, individuals, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and communities around the country unite to promote suicide prevention awareness. And the Napa County Suicide Prevention Council is a public-private collaborative of people and organizations dedicated to reducing stigma surrounding suicide. The council supports those who have lost loved ones to suicide, identifies and advocates for resources, and promotes a safe, connected, and resilient community dedicated to reducing the risk of suicide. And in the last seven years, NCSPC has worked tirelessly to reach their vision of a suicide-free community through education, training, stigma reduction, linkage to services, and provision of resources to combat suicide. And it is important to understand the harsh reality that exists surrounding this crisis. From 2020 to 2022, the suicide rate in the state of California was 10.7 deaths per 100,000 people. Napa County's rate was 11.9 deaths per 100,000 people, placing Napa County higher than the state average. Whereas in fiscal year 2324, law enforcement personnel countywide responded to over 320 calls related to suicide, and the Napa County Mobile Response Team responded to 228 calls. And whereas in 2324, the NCSPC trained 768 community members in the Question, Persuade, Refer model of suicide prevention. And whereas in partnership with the Napa County Health and Human Services, the NCSPC organized and hosted the inaugural Suicide Prevention Conference, Hope Beyond Darkness: Uniting for Suicide Prevention. I think we will hear a little bit more about that from our speakers. Now therefore be it proclaimed, this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on the 10th day of September 2024, recognizes September 2024 as Suicide Prevention Month in Napa County. And in doing so, we urge all members of the community to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive toward reducing and ending suicide.
Good morning, Board and Chair Gallagher. My name is Cassandra Aslamie, and I'm a Deputy Director with Health and Human Services with Behavioral Health. And it's an honor to represent alongside Health and Human Services Agency, as well as our Suicide Prevention Council and our Suicide Prevention Chair Jenny Olson. In accepting the proclamation of September as Suicide Prevention Month, through funding that we allocate through the Mental Health Services Act, Prevention and Early Intervention category, Health and Human Services Agency is able to fund Mentis to backbone the Napa County Suicide Prevention Council and deliver high-quality and life-saving suicide prevention services across the county. It is our strong belief that the high-impact services provided through Mentis, including Question, Persuade, and Refer, commonly known as QPR, which easily and quickly trains any person in suicide prevention, has assisted in this life-saving goal. The three goals of QPR are: one, to recognize the warning signs of suicide; two, to know how to offer hope; and three, to know how to get help and save a life. As mentioned in fiscal year 2023, 2024, Mentis alone has trained over 768 of our community members in Napa County in the one-hour QPR class, likely connecting many vulnerable community members to support in saving people's lives. Together with Mentis and the county, we share the HHSI value of serving with commitment, with collaboration, and with compassion to our community.
Thank you, Cassandra, and thank you Chair Gallagher and Board Supervisors for your continued support and commitment to suicide prevention. Over the past year, the Napa County Suicide Prevention Council has continued our commitment to break stigma, offer support, and train community members how to care for those who are struggling with suicide ideation as well as suicide loss. As Cassandra mentioned, with the support of Napa County and Mental Health Services Act funding, we are publishing, or actually we published and are, I need to put my glasses on, sorry, published and are implementing our three-year strategic plan for suicide prevention. It was published in January. We hired a full-time suicide prevention specialist, Arturo Garcia, who will be training community members in QPR suicide prevention, both in English and Spanish. And we are also designing a year-round marketing and outreach campaign to reach those who need the support the most. And as you also heard, we are hosting our first Suicide Prevention Conference. When I, when I first gave information for the proclamation, I thought this was to happen later in the month. So it's actually not happened yet. It's happening on September 18th at Napa Valley College. We will have a powerful keynote speaker who is a licensed clinical social worker, a mother, a minister, an author, a veteran, and a suicide survivor. We also have six breakout sessions that relate to the work that we committed to in our strategic plan for suicide prevention. I gave flyers, Arturo gave flyers to you all. I hope you can make it or that you can potentially send somebody, even if it's just for the morning keynote session. Today, actually, September 10th is World Suicide Prevention Day, and it's a day where we in the suicide prevention world commit to stigma-free, supportive community for preventing suicide. And Mentis has launched a campaign, You Are Not Alone, as long, as well as the Suicide Prevention Council. You are not alone. Hope is possible. Help is available. You'll see the ad on buses rolling around town and on bus shelters, as well as on social media and hanging in, in rooms on walls. Thank you very much. Your acknowledgement and recognition of suicide awareness and prevention is truly admirable. Thank you.
Nathan, Mr. Hobbs, join me? Nathan is the HHSI Assistant Deputy Director of Behavioral Health. And I'm going to read a few things and then give you a chance to say something. This is about the people that have individuals that are going through recovery or have succeeded in recovery, but it's also about the amazing staff that work for Napa County that helped facilitate that. So I'm going to read a few of the wherethes that sort of encapsulate that and then hand it over to Nathan. Whereas there are millions of Americans whose lives have been transformed through recovery and whose accomplishments often go unrecognized, National Recovery Month intentionally celebrates the success, strength, and courage that it takes to live in recovery and highlights that recovery is possible. And whereas as part of Recovery Month, National Addiction Professionals Day will be celebrated on September 20th to honor the dedication of professionals who help make recovery in all its forms possible. The evidence-based treatment and recovery services they deliver improve the health and well-being of Napa County's residents struggling with addiction. Now therefore be proclaimed that this board does hereby recognize September 2024 as National Recovery Month in Napa County. And I want to congratulate Nathan Hobbs and his staff on all the great work they do and give him a chance to share more with you.
Well, good morning, and thank you very much for the proclamation today. My name is Nathan Hobbs, and as was mentioned, I'm the Assistant Deputy Director and County Alcohol and Drug Program Administrator with Napa County. And it's an honor to be here today. A recent survey found that about 17% of all people over the age of 12 in the U.S. have a substance use disorder. That's nearly 46 million Americans. But just under 15% of those people have actually received substance use treatment over the past year. Of the vast majority of folks who did not receive treatment and yet qualified for it, 95% did not perceive a need for it. The goal of Recovery Month is to reach that 95%. It is to visibly promote and lift up substance use disorder treatment in communities like ours across the country. By showing that recovery is possible and what healing from an addiction looks like, we also celebrate the work of dedicated treatment providers who are the heroes of this movement. Heroes who dedicate their time, passion, and careers to helping people with addictions. We are proud to share with you that Napa County Health and Human Services Agency hosts a variety of events in the, for Recovery Month that are meant to draw awareness of substance use disorders and to eliminate stigma associated with receiving treatment. Today, at this very moment, Napa County Behavioral Health Treatment Counselors are marching around our South County campus for Health and Human Services in collaboration with allies, friends, and clients to take a moment today out of their day to celebrate and acknowledge National Recovery Month. Coming up later this month, on September 25th, Health and Human Services Behavioral Health will host clients, community participants, and over 27 community-based providers in a large recovery resource fair from 11:00 to 1:00 at the South County campus. This event with resources, activities, food, and raffles focuses on the premise that wellness and recovery is holistic and it is based in community. We are grateful to the County of Napa for proclaiming this month as National Recovery Month. Thank you for joining us as we promote together the values of Health and Human Services Agency, commitment, collaboration, and compassion for and within our community. Thank you very much.
We're going to move, oh, we do have to do one thing that I forgot to do at the beginning of the proclamations, and that was to vote on the proclamations. So we're going to do that now. So I need a motion to approve the proclamations and a second. So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by [inaudible], seconded by Gregory. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you. Have to remember to do that at the beginning next time. Okay, we are on to item five, the Consent Calendar for Special Districts. That is 5A through C. Do we have any public comment on items 5A through C? Anything on the line? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Okay, I got a motion by Gregory, seconded by Ramos. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, we are on to item number six, our Consent Calendar. We are dropping 6E. Do I have any comments on?
One, just to comment, just so it's known that G is a grand jury response that is on consent. And then just to share here, and to my colleagues, that item X is the approval of a satellite office in District 5 in the City of American Canyon with a rent of zero, the consideration being the better public service for all residents in that area. And all we have to pay for are custodian fees, so I just wanted to share that. We are incredibly excited to be able to be moving a satellite office into District 5, and that is the first time ever that we have had a satellite office. With that, I'd be happy to make a motion on the balance of the consent.
Great, thank you. Any second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ramos, seconded by Gregory. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And thank you to City of American Canyon for the great deal on the rent. Okay. All right, we are now going to move to general public comment. So if you are here to make comment to the board, please come forward. This is for anything not on the agenda today. So please come forward if you'd like to make any comments.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Yolanda Ayala. I am a mother, an educator, a former Legacy Youth Project LYP teacher, and a concerned community member. I've lived in Napa Valley for 40 years, and my children attended NVUSD schools. My youngest child, my daughter, was a co-founder of the LYP Girls Cohort at Redwood Middle School for the 2018-2019 school year. That same school year, and after finishing my program at UC Davis, I joined the LYP staff as a teacher. I'm honored to say that teaching for LYP has been one of my greatest professional accomplishments. Maybe not so much for my daughter, as I eventually would become one of her teachers. As educators, we have the unique opportunity to witness children flourish and transform. When we, the adults, create the conditions for them to envision all the possibilities, they rediscover that everything they are searching for is already within them to thrive. I witness this in so much more positive impact in the LYP classrooms, which leads me to the following. We are here to express our concern about the latest findings of the grand jury report hitting the reset button addressing gangs in Napa County, and how this issue that was once solved has resurfaced and urgently needs to be resolved. We would like to share LYP's response letter to the grand jury report as we were cited, although we were never interviewed or asked to respond. So I'm going to go ahead and read that letter. "We appreciate the grand jury's report, and thank you for prioritizing this community concern. The findings and data provided in 'Hitting the Reset Button: Addressing Gangs in Napa County' are of utmost importance and concern. As community members and co-founders of the Legacy Youth Project, LYP, we believe it is critical to address some key points made in the report. Unfortunately, it comes as no surprise to learn of the increased gang activity as reported on Page 2, especially, quote, 'Juvenile gang prosecutions increased by 60% from 2021 to 2023,' end quote. We would like to note that the significant increase began one year after NVUSD dismantled LYP in 2020 at the height of a global pandemic. The following are some areas of the report that we have questions about contain inconsistencies and/or make erroneous claims." Page 2 of the grand jury report says, "The Napa County Grand Jury Recommendations that follow include: reestablishment of a youth intervention program like Legacy, starting with students in the 5th grade. Our response: We agree and want to know how such a program will parallel the highly successful LYP model." Page 21 of the grand jury report, Recommendations, Recommendations 1 through 9. Our response...
Could you just wrap up? Thank you.
We'll share a copy of the letter. I thank you for the opportunity. We're here to call attention to this matter and seek your leadership in ensuring that this community ill finds a cure. Like we were in 2012 when LYP started, we remain committed to seeking solutions with the utmost urgency. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Buenos dias, Board of Supervisors. My name is Carlos Hagadorn. I'm a Chicano Filipino. My gender preferred pronouns are he/him-el and sia. I'm a professor of Ethnic Studies at San Francisco State University. I'm also an educational consultant, training teachers and school districts in humanizing education and teaching, and creating homegrown youth development programs that are committed to, that are community-responsive to the needs of their community. I am a co-founder of the Legacy Youth Project, and I'm proud to call Napa my own for the last 20 years. I'm also here to express our concern regarding the latest findings of the grand jury report. It has been four years since NVUSD abruptly and violently dismantled our beloved homegrown educational program, the Legacy Youth Project. This was a traumatic experience that we still feel deeply in our hearts, left a scar in Napa Valley, and more importantly, pushed our most vulnerable youth to the community margins once again. In 2012, the LYP emerged as an educational program responding to community, public health, and educational crisis. The NVUSD superintendent at the time, Dr. Sweeney, stated, "The Legacy Youth Project is changing student lives. We'd like to replicate that program into our middle and high schools because they are reaching students that we could not reach before." By 2015, the Napa County Grand Jury's report, "Gang Activity in Napa County: The Positive Impacts of Proactive Measures," recommended continuing the Legacy program at Vintage High School and use it as a model for other high schools in Napa. By 2020, Legacy Youth Project offered an academic home for our students at Vintage High School, 9th through 12th grade, Silverado Middle School, Redwood Middle School, Harvest Middle School, and Napa Valley Language Academy. The LYP also had a central office at the district. For our students, the Legacy Youth Project provided an Ethnic Studies, Community, and Culturally Responsive program that centered them through a holistic approach. Our program provided authentic caring for our youth who needed to raise their level of academic discipline while developing cultural agency in the world. LYP became a home away from home where they were challenged to become critically conscious thinkers and ultimately agents of change in our community and world. In our eight years, our LYP students achieved 100% graduation rate. 70% of them increased their GPAs, 100% college enrollment at Napa Valley College. 90% of them felt we belonged to their community. This was all done through data and survey. LYP was truly home away from home. There's numerous reasons why we were dismantled, three reasons mainly. Financial, we didn't have teaching credentials, and we weren't scalable enough. We're going to share with you our truth to all of those reasons, and some homework. Since we're teachers, we brought you homework to give you, okay? But I'm also here as a concerned community member. Four years has moved on, we understand that, but with this recent findings, again, we're seeing, you know, the reemergence of our youth being marginalized, right? Our youth are escaping something because they're not feeling belonged, and they're running towards something who's bringing them in, right? And so there's a lot of...
Mr. Hagadorn, can you wrap up?
Yeah.
We have three minutes for public comment.
Yeah, and there's a lot of research that shows that the Legacy Youth Project was one of our solutions in our community. So thank you. Can we hand you our folders?
Yes, please. You can hand them to the clerk. Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room? Please feel free to come forward to the podium.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jim McNamara. I live in southwest Napa. I've never been to one of these before, but I've been to quite a few city council meetings. And I never get to say what I want to say because I get cut off every time I get to the meat of it. I'm so glad I came to listen to those guys. The neighborhood I live in is a big problem. The city totally ignores it. I don't know if it's a gang, but there is a bunch of people in that area that want to make Napa like Oakland. With their street racing every night, all the time. There's no police presence there, ever. Could you help them? Could you help the city take care of that area? Please. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Do we have any public comment online? I mean, on the phone? Okay. All right, thank you. Let me turn my lights on. Okay, we are on to Board of Supervisors Reports and Announcements. And Supervisor Katrelle? Did you hit your light? Everything should be on. I do have Supervisor Gregory up.
Yep. Two quick things. Last week was the CSAC quarterly board meeting. That's the California... State Association of Counties. Thank you.
He's turning that brain off.
Eight years, you think I would...
Already?
Yeah, right off the top. CSAC board meeting last week, primarily the focus was endorsements of some important propositions on the ballot. We took action on three. CSAC endorsed Prop 4, which is shortened as the Climate Bond. CSAC endorsed Prop 5, which reduces the voter threshold to 55% for local bonds for housing and public infrastructure, similar to school improvements. And then on Prop 36, voted to support that measure, which allows felony charges and increases sentences for certain drug and theft crimes. And again, this is a group of 58 supervisors from all over the state coming together on these issues, so I want to share that. And then I have a meeting Friday evening with the Partridge Road community to check in on issues related to Partridge Road, but also talk about the project we have planned next year. Not enough money to do everything, but to talk about the options we have with the money we have. And if anybody in that area has not heard of this meeting, let me know, and I'll make sure you get looped in. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Ramos?
Ditto to all of that, since I was there as well. I just wanted to share with my colleagues, I had the opportunity to share Napa County's experiences in disaster with Listos, California. And Listos is the OES branch and geared towards harder-to-reach communities. And I got to be able to share some of our lessons learned, and it was really, it was really well-received, and it was really great because it showed me we are not alone in our challenges of reaching cultural competency and moving beyond just translation, and it was really great to be a part of that. And also, I was able to take a tour of Napa Sand. I hadn't done that in a very long time. And who knew? Poop was exciting, but it actually really is. And I was fascinated by all of the infrastructure improvements that have been made, and really, I would encourage all of my colleagues, we all seem to have a little bit of Napa Sand in our district, and I would just encourage you to go ahead and take the tour because you'll learn so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Petrosa?
Thank you, Chair. Just a great wine capital update. So as many of you know, we started the Napa Initiative, which is working together with other elected leaders throughout the world. And one of the topics that we're going to be talking about this year is the overproduction of grapes. So I'm really looking forward to hearing what other regions are doing to cope with this, and we're also going to be moderating the discussion. So I look forward to being able to present on that.
Great, that's going to be really interesting. Thank you for being part of that, part of the panel. Okay, and the, yes, you go right ahead, Supervisor Katrelle. Thank you. I just had two meetings to report on. I met with Santa Elena Rotary and gave them an update on things happening in the county. And then last week, I had a meeting here with the PG&E representatives, both their government relations person and their regional vice president, which was great to get that person in our office, and just took a moment to convey the frustration of many of our constituents with the frequent power outages and not enough communication before and after. So we talked about some ways that they are looking to improve, as well as giving us an update on EPSS technology and how things are forecasting for undergrounding that continues. And so I hope it was a positive discussion, and I'm looking forward to being able to share more updates from them directly, as well as make sure people know who to contact when they have a problem. Okay, great. I just wanted to mention that I'll be in a meeting later this week with BACMID, Air District Representatives, and Napa Valley Unified School District. We've been working on getting an air monitor back in Napa County. We haven't had one physical air monitor for several years, and so that's coming, and so really excited about that. And then I also just wanted to ask our CEO if we could start to plan board updates on the BRIC grant, the work plans, you know, kind of status updates in terms of where we are and how we're doing, maybe, I don't know, quarterly or something, so that we can keep on top of what's happening and ask questions, et cetera. And does anybody else have anything? All right, great. Then we will go ahead and move on. We do not have anything for nine or 10. We are at item 11A, and this is to appoint one of the following applicants to serve as the Napa County Representative on the Bay Area Tool Authority Regional Measure 3 Independent Oversight Committee, with a term commencing immediately and ending on June 30th, 2027. And I do see that we have two applicants for one position, so just wanted to say that we really, really appreciate everyone who applies for any of our commissions or committees. It shows that you are engaged and interested in the community, and if you don't happen to receive an appointment, please apply for another commission or committee. I'm sure we will find a place for you, and we really appreciate you wanting to serve. Do I have any comments from... Oh, I need public comment. Thank you for reminder. Do we have anything on the phone? Okay. Okay, Supervisor Katrelle. Oh, Supervisor, no, Supervisor Ramos.
That would be me. Thank you. To echo Chair Gallagher, I too am incredibly grateful when we have more than one applicant for an opening, because it shows our community's commitment to the work that we do. This oversight on Regional Measure 3 is going to be incredibly important to ensuring the success of Regional Measure 3. And in fact, we've already received Regional Measure $3 into Napa County, so hopefully there's more to come in that. Given the uniqueness of American Canyon's commuter status and being able to have that representation and that voice, I would ask my colleagues to join me. I want to nominate Aisha Nasir for this committee, with a term commencing immediately and ending June 30th, 2027, and extend my gratitude to Heather Stanton for applying for this position as well.
Okay, that's a first motion, I'm guessing? And do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ramos, a second by Gregory. And do you want to make, and now we can have discussion. Supervisor Katrelle. Yeah, that makes sense to me. I'm just wondering if we know, so there's another person who serves on this board. Do we know what district they're in?
If you give me a moment, I can find out.
Okay. That your logic makes sense.
That your logic makes sense, Supervisor Ramos?
Is it Pam Kendig? It's Pam Kendig.
Which is not District 5?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Can I call the question? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, great. And congratulations to Ms. Nasir. All right, we are on to B. We will appoint two of the following applicants to serve as the general public member representing Napa County to the Napa Valley Transportation Authority Active Transportation Advisory Committee, with term of office to commence immediately and expire on September 30, 2026. We do have three applicants and we have two openings. And again, thank you to everyone who applied. Do we have any public comment on this item? Do we have anything on the phone?
No one on the line.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments from the board? Supervisor Cottrell?
I was going to nominate as one selection Caitlin Ochoa-Yamas.
Okay. Do we want to take these one at a time? In terms of voting?
It's the pleasure of the board.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do that.
Second?
Okay, great, I got a second. So we have a motion by Supervisor Ramos and a second by Supervisor Cottrell to appoint Caitlin Ochoa-Yamas. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. And now we need another, let's see, Supervisor Ramos?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jason Dominici to the other position.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ramos, second by Gregory to appoint Jason Dominici. Do I have any further discussion? Supervisor, okay, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, great. And congratulations to Caitlin and Jason. All right, we are going to go ahead and move on to C, which is a consideration and adoption of a resolution of findings of fact and decision on appeal regarding an appeal filed by appellate applicant Hayes Drumright concerning the Napa County Planning Commission's decision on May 1, 2024, to deny the Vida Valiente Winery Use Permit Number P20-00079-UP. And, oh, there you are, Ms. Anderson. And thank you so much. Please feel free to go ahead and present.
Thank you, Chair Gallagher. I'm joined by project planner Matt Ringel. And the resolution before you today is the final step in the appeal hearing. It reflects the tentative decision that you took to deny the, or excuse me, to uphold the appeal and reverse the Planning Commission's decision, thereby approving the Vida Valiente Winery. There are also revised conditions of approval attached. Public hearing is closed, so public comment is limited to whether the resolution accurately reflects the findings, and we would recommend that you adopt it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do I have any public comment on the resolution? On the phone? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Anyone have a motion? All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Gregory.
Second.
And a second by Supervisor Cottrell. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to 11D, where we will receive a presentation from Borough County Representatives of California, Affiliate Golden State Finance Authority, regarding the Recover California Housing Program. And Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd just like to take a moment to introduce Megan Harris. She is going to be joining us remotely from RCRC to present this program. And it has, unfortunately, Jennifer Palmer isn't here today due to traveling for work. But she does also support this program and finds it exciting that this is going to be a presentation for our community. So thank you.
Thank you. And, hi, Megan.
Hi, Madam Supervisor. Good morning, fellow supervisors. I'm Megan Harris, Program Administrator with Golden State Finance Authority, which is an affiliate entity of RCRC. And I'm so excited to present this program to you all today. I understand that I don't have control of my slides, so I'm just waiting for them to come up. And then we'll go ahead and get right into it. Next slide, please. So the Recover California Home Buyer Assistance is a brand-new program. We just launched it in July of this year. And it's designed to provide home buyers with up to $350,000 in assistance to purchase a home outside of high-risk area for wildfires. And we're targeting low-to-moderate-income families who are currently or previously occupied a residence that was located in a high or very high-risk area for wildfire. And again, the overall objective here is to mitigate their risk for being exposed to wildfire going forward, at least as it pertains to their residence. And so this program has approximately $28 million in funding available. And it's provided by the California Department of Housing and Community Development through a disaster recovery grant from HUT. And so GSFA is essentially the program manager for this program. Next slide, please. And GSFA is an entity that's been in business providing access to affordable homeownership for Californians for over 31 years now. So we've pretty much primed and poised for this opportunity to make sure that the program reaches the populations it's intended to assist. And our legacy is basically providing down payment assistance programs to help, help bridge the affordability gap between, you know, what people have access to and that initial investment for down payment and closing costs versus the price of the actual home. And I'm sure a lot of us understand that as renters, the vast majority of renters are paying mortgage-sized rents. But that's the, the initial investment, right? The down payment and closing costs is usually the barrier that keeps people from accessing homeownership. So what we're doing here at GSFA is trying to make, trying to bridge that gap to make homeownership a reality for more people here in California. And so far, we've helped over 85,900 families with over $667 million in assistance so far. Next slide, please. So there's a reason why we care about homeownership here at GSFA. There's a, you know, innumerable benefits, right? The positive impact it's been shown to have on families and communities at large. It improves stability in neighborhoods, increases educational achievement, right? When your family has a stable home life, there's more civic engagement. It improves physical and psychological health, right? Reducing stress and even correlates to crime reduction. Because when people have a tangible investment in their community, they're more likely to care about their community. They're more likely to conduct themselves in a manner that promotes safety and well-being for all. And then, of course, we can't overlook the financial impact that homeownership has on families and individuals. According to the Federal Reserve 2022 Survey of Consumer Finances, the average or the median homeowner has a net worth that of 38 times more than a non-homeowner. So if we were to put that in dollars and cents, we're looking at a net worth of a homeowner somewhere in the neighborhood of $396,200, whereas a non-homeowner may have a net worth somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,400. So big disparity there. And our mission here is to try to close that gap. Next slide, please. So with the Recover California Home Buyer Assistance, there's going to be three primary criteria for eligibility. Number one, they were a renter or homeowner or even living rent-free in a, in an eligible county in a corresponding disaster year. And the, there are 10 counties in total that are eligible for this program. And we're targeting low-to-moderate-income families that may otherwise not have access to homeownership at all. And so there's 10 counties in total, as I mentioned. Napa County is eligible in the year 2020. So if you or your family, neighbors, friends, et cetera, were residents in Napa County and your property was located in a high-risk area for wildfire, you could be eligible for the assistance from this program. And you don't necessarily have to have been directly impacted by a wildfire. So for example, your house didn't necessarily have to burn down, or maybe you didn't even have to evacuate. But if your home that you occupied in 2020 was located in a high-risk area for wildfire, this could be an opportunity for you to change that going forward. Next slide, please. So I want to talk about the assistance, how it's structured and how everything works. So the assistance itself provides up to $350,000. And it is a need-based assistance. And so there's a couple of different factors that go into determining how much assistance someone gets. But let's talk about how the assistance works in general. So for starters, the assistance is a forgivable second mortgage. And it has a five-year term with a 0% interest rate. And so there are no monthly payments. There's no interest accrual on that second mortgage. It's simply going to be forgiven in full after five years have elapsed, as long as the home buyer continues to remain in the property as their primary residence. And it's not an all-or-nothing forgiveness. It's actually forgiven at a rate of 20% per year that the home buyer occupies the home, again, as a primary residence. Now, there are going to be unfortunate circumstances. Life happens, people pass away, they have terminal illness, et cetera. But for the most part, if someone decides to vacate the property prior to that five-year period elapsing, there will be a recall on any assistance that has not been forgiven up to that point. So you want to be mindful of that. But of course, like I said, there are going to be exceptions to that. And the assistance's overall objective is to bridge that affordability gap, right? Between what the home buyer can actually afford on a mortgage loan versus the cost of the property itself. And we all know, we've been watching the news, we've been keeping an eye on the economy. And so we understand that there's a big affordability gap, which makes this an even greater opportunity, especially for people who have viewed homeownership as out of reach for them up to this point. And so the assistance is going to be used for down payment, right? So again, we're bridging the gap between the mortgage loan and the cost of the home. Also, closing costs, which are the typical expenses that come along with purchasing a home and closing escrow, so lender fees, title fees, et cetera. And then also homebuyer education fees. Homebuyer education is a requirement of the program. We've negotiated a course with E-Home America to provide a discounted rate to applicants of the program. But again, the assistance funds from this program can also reimburse the home buyer for that cost as well. Next slide, please. So this is a general overview, very high-level overview of how the program will work. So the first thing is that the home buyer is going to connect with one of our participating lenders. We have a network of participating lenders that have all taken extensive training on the program. And they know how to identify people who could potentially be impacted by the program. So they're going to connect with one of our participating lenders who will determine their initial eligibility. Then it's the lender's responsibility to determine how much of a home loan the home buyer can afford without any assistance at all. And for some people, it's $50,000, $75,000, $150,000, and so forth. It's going to be different for every family. And so after they determine that initial first mortgage loan amount, that affordability range there, they'll be able to estimate how much assistance the home buyer will qualify for from this program. Once that estimate is made, the home buyer's in a position to then start shopping for a property. And this is a great opportunity to make a credible offer to a seller because at this point, they know how much money they qualify for on the home loan for the first mortgage. And they also understand how much assistance they'll be getting from the program to close the gap. So they're in a position to make a real offer to a seller and present themselves as a viable buyer. And so once the property is secured and in contract, the lender can then go in and reserve the assistance officially for the home buyer, as well as lock in the interest rate for the home buyer. And we do set the interest rates for the program, which are designed to be affordable. So there's no issues, again, about affordability there. And then we also require the homebuyer education course, as I mentioned. Even if there's more than one applicant on the loan application itself or the program application, at least one home buyer would need to complete the homebuyer education course. Once that's complete, we can go ahead and close escrow, and the home buyer can enjoy their new home. Next slide, please. So I want to give an example of the difference the assistance could be. Okay, so what we have here at the top left is the qualifying loan amount, right? So let's say we have a home buyer who at the moment can only afford a $268,000 home loan, right? But if we look to the right, the purchase price on all the homes that are available to them or in their area where they're searching are in the $600,000 range. So that's a big disparity. But if we look in the middle here, we see that there is $350,000 from this program that's designed to close the gap. So it's positioned in the middle appropriately. So when we apply $332,000 of the assistance from this program to that gap, it closes it. And then it leaves an additional $18,000 left over to assist with closing costs. And again, other expenses that are typical for purchasing a home. And so this program is literally making homeownership dreams reality for so many people. We've got single parents, we've got people who work at the mall or 7-Eleven, right? That are able to benefit this, benefit from this program, whereas, again, homeownership was never even a reality for them prior to. Next slide, please. So there, it is going to be some math in determining how much assistance everyone gets. Again, this is going to be a need-based program. So $350,000 isn't going to go to every single family because not every single family or home buyer is going to need the full $350,000, nor will they necessarily qualify for the full $350,000. But calculating the assistance is pretty straightforward. They're going to, the lender is going to take the lesser of the appraised value or purchase price of the property. Then they're going to subtract that total first mortgage loan amount that the home buyer can afford, again, without the assistance. Then they're going to add the cost of the closing fees, as well as prepaid, and then subtract the greater of duplication of benefits or liquid assets they have over 100K. And I want to take a minute to just explain that part. So duplication of benefits are assistance for housing-specific expenses from a federal entity or another source. Again, it has to be housing-related, that was also connected to that disaster, right? Whatever fire was impacting the home buyer in 2020. And so if they have assistance left over, right? And it's been four years for Napa County. So, you know, the likelihood of those funds being left is probably slim to none. But if there are any funds left, those would potentially be considered as a borrower contribution, unless they have assets over $100,000. So any amount, and it has to be liquid assets. So we're not talking retirement, 401K pensions, et cetera. Any liquid assets over $100,000. Let's say it's $110,000, we would be looking at the $10,000, right? And so if the home buyer has leftover assistance, say $5,000 from FEMA, but they have $110,000 left in their checking account, then they would need to contribute $10,000 because it's greater than the five that they have left over from FEMA to the transaction. And the benefit of $350,000 would also be reduced by that $10,000 as well. And so that's how we would arrive at a final amount that the home buyer would qualify for in assistance. And again, it's going to be different for everyone. And we haven't seen anyone yet who has any assistance left over, if they received any at all. And very few home buyers have over $100,000 in liquid assets in their account as well. So again, the vast majority of people are able to significantly benefit from this program. Next slide, please. So the first mortgage guidelines are as follows. We set the interest rates for the first mortgage loans, as I mentioned before. They're all 30-year fixed-rate loans, so no surprises about adjustments or anything going on later down the line. We have FHA, VA... We have FHA, VA, USDA loans available for government options, and then we have conventional loans available for conventional loan options. And these are options that the lender will counsel the homebuyer on to help determine which is going to be the best option for them. The loan limit for the program is $766,550, and this is just the loan limit, it's not a purchase price limit. So again, if the homebuyer has assets, that can potentially close the gap on whatever assistance, whatever the assistance doesn't cover, they're welcome to bring those funds in as well. And again, the target here is low to moderate income, and we're basing this on HUD standard of low to moderate income families, and it's going to be based not only on household size, right, and actual income from any adult 18 or over that's receiving a consistent, stable income, but it's also going to be based on the location of the subject property. So if they're in Sonoma County right now, but they want to purchase a property in Napa County where they lived in 2020, then we would base the income limit on Napa County's income limits. Perfect credit is not required for this program. It's a 640 minimum credit score that's required here. And then the debt-to-income ratio, which again, is going to be the metric the lender uses to help determine how much of a home loan the homebuyer can actually afford. So it takes their debts versus their income, and then there's a number that will result, that will help them determine the threshold or the capacity for a mortgage loan. And so the minimum debt-to-income ratio here is 42%. That was determined by HCD, the Housing Community Development Department, that is the most reasonable minimum debt-to-income ratio to ensure that only folks who actually need the program can get it. And then we have a maximum debt-to-income ratio of 45%, because again, the program is designed to be sustainable and homeownership long-term. And so we want to make sure that home loan is actually affordable for the homebuyer. And again, as I mentioned, the homebuyer education is required. It's going to be an eight-hour course for at least one of the applicants on the mortgage loan, along with a one-on-one consultation. And again, this is just to prepare them for homeownership and all the pitfalls and, you know, potential variables that go along with it. So again, they're prepared for a long-term, sustainable homeownership journey. Next slide, please. So the property also has to meet some eligibility requirements. So initially, the property they lived in in 2020 had to be located in a high-risk area for wildfire. And so the new property obviously cannot be located in a high-risk area for wildfire. But a couple of other elements have to be met on the property as well. So first and foremost, we can use this program to purchase a single-family home. If they have an ADU on the property, an accessory dwelling unit, like a granny quarters, et cetera, that's perfectly fine. Also condos, townhomes, PUDs, and manufacturer homes, which tend to be in the more affordable range. But there is going to be a minimum and maximum bedroom count allowed on the property, excludes bathrooms, right? We're just talking bedrooms, and it's going to be based on the number of people who will live in the home. So for example, in the chart here, you can see number of persons, one, so that's one person who will live in the home. They have a minimum bedroom count requirement of one and a maximum bedroom count of two. And then it goes up from there. If we look at the bottom row there, where it says five people living in the home, they're going to have a minimum requirement of four bedrooms in that home, with a maximum number of five bedrooms. Now, homeownership, it has been a struggle for a lot of existing homeowners due to homeowners' insurance, right? We've got insurers bailing on California altogether, or the ones who, you know, are remaining in California are charging exorbitant rates, and then we have the California Fair Plan for people who can't even get into that. And it's just really positioned folks to be in a very inconvenient, unaffordable situation when it comes to their homeowner's insurance. So another element of eligibility here with the property is that it has to be insurable by a traditional homeowner's insurance policy. So no California Fair Plans, and again, we want to make sure that premium is also affordable for the homebuyer, at least over the next five years. So if the property is located outside of a high-risk area, it's more likely to be insured by an affordable homeownership policy. Next slide, please. So I've covered the general highlights of this program. We do have detailed trainings and seminars that we're offering to lenders, realtors, homebuyers, and, you know, the public at large. But basically, the short way to describe how to get started is the first thing the homebuyer needs to do is reach out to one of our participating lenders on the website. When you land on our website, gsfahome.org, there's going to be a big yellow button that says Recover California HBA Lenders. And so if they click on that button, it's going to bring up a list of all the lenders who are approved to offer this program to homebuyers. This is a benefit, because again, these lenders have been trained on the program, so they understand it, they're going to walk the homebuyer through the program, everything that's involved. So there's never going to be a point where the homebuyer should be left scratching their head, not understanding what's going on or where they're at in the process. So at that point, they'll be able to explain to the homebuyer all the elements of the program, discuss interest rates, loan amounts, all the requirements, right? And then they're also going to calculate the assistance for the homebuyer, so that they have a clear understanding of what their options are, and they're going to process the application not only for the first mortgage loan, but also for the assistance from this program. So there's never going to be a point in time when the homebuyer is working directly with GSFA for the assistance from the program. They're going to have to help every step of the way from one of our participating lenders on the list. We have a QR code here to expedite people's access to the list, so you're welcome to scan that and take a look at that list on your own time. Next slide, please. So we do have a homebuyer workshop available and open to the public that we're going to be posting in the early part of November. And so I just want to encourage everyone to keep an eye out. We usually send an Eventbrite out. We also should have a link on our website, gsfahome.org, on our events calendar, where you can click and register from there. But there will be more information to come going forward on that homebuyer event coming up in November. Next slide, please. So with that said, I want to thank you all for your time and your interest, and I'm open to questions if you have any.
Thank you so much, Megan. That was a great presentation. Do you have any public comment on the presentation? Anything on the phone? Okay, Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you, Chair Gallagher, and thank you so much, Megan, for the presentation, and I think this hopefully could help folks here who were impacted by 2017 or 2020 fires. I am looking at the Fire Hazard Severity Zone viewer, and, you know, my guess is the program is helping, you know, move people from high-risk hillsides down into the flats. But also, you know, there are people, I'm looking at a community up in Angwin where most of it is high-fire severity, but a small segment of it is moderate. So I think from what you've shared, it's folks who live in, whose homes are in the moderate area that would be, that home would be eligible for this program, not the high-fire area. Is that correct?
So the new home purchase, right, outside of a high or very high-risk area could potentially be moderate, right? It could be located in a moderate-risk area. However, we just want to be mindful of the homeownership or the homeowner's insurance policy access there, because again, a lot of these insurers are looking at moderate areas as higher risk and aren't insuring it or making properties only available to the California Fair Plan. So that's just something to be mindful of. But moderate-risk properties are eligible for purchase through the program. Again, you just want to be mindful of the insurance element on that.
Yeah, no, and I think you're getting the point of my question, which is, my concern would be that homes in that area are not guaranteed to be insurable under anything but the Fair Plan. So someone wants to be, wants to ask the homeownership question and the insurance question almost at the same time when they're looking for a place.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's where having a competent Realtor comes into play too, because they should be familiar with the area, also familiarize themselves with the map. And we are going to be basing this on the specific property address. So not every single address, even in a moderate area, is going to actually be classified as moderate. Some folks will be high-risk or very high, or some people no risk at all or very low risk. So that's where, again, having that competent Realtor team is going to be a benefit to the homebuyer and making sure that they end up in an affordable situation outside of a high-risk area, or even moderate, to be fair.
Okay. So the map is a starting point, but by no means something that helps someone have a comprehensive answer about the location being insurable.
You know, exactly. I mean, unfortunately, it's the best tool that we have to work with, but it's kind of a moving target, especially when we look at all the communities that were previously classified as low-risk that are recently or currently being impacted by wildfires, right? And so I'm assuming that, you know, while it's not a perfect science, CAL FIRE is working on, you know, updating the list and making it more realistic, but yeah, the map is no means, you know, a black and white on the safety of that particular area.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I had a question in reading about this, your 2021 program where I think Plumas County is the only county listed. That includes landlords' eligibility if they agreed to rent to low or moderate-income households. Is that the only instance where that's available, or is that also available for any of the other program years?
Yeah, so I don't believe that we were administrating that particular program. I know Recover California has a branch of particular programs. This one just happens to be the homebuyer assistance one, so I think you may be referencing a program that we weren't involved in.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much, Megan. We really appreciate this great information, and we'll do our best to get it out to our constituents.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks so much. Bye-bye.
Take care.
Okay. We are going to move on to item 11E. And I believe Mr. Mize, you are going to present for us. This is to adopt a resolution revising Part 1, Section 8, Board of Supervisors of the Napa County Policy Manual. And good morning.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Mize. I'm the county's Legislative and Policy Analyst. The policy revision before you today serves a dual purpose. First, it aligns policy language with current and recommended practices. Second, it aggregates related language from multiple documents for easier reading. Staff asked today for adoption with immediate effect. Let's begin with the structure of the existing policy. The portions of Section 8 that deal with the board's self-governance presently comprise three separate documents. These documents contain interrelated topics. Each of these three documents, however, differ significantly in structure. Their interrelated content and differing structures make these documents challenging to read. Moving to the revision, the policy revision consolidates these three documents into one document that also updates the board's policies or practices and procedures. The consolidation also makes the topics easier to follow by categorizing self-governance into four general areas. First, meeting procedures, legislative and regulatory affairs, ethics and standards of conduct for members of the board, and creation and management of advisory boards and committees. One final note, the revision proposes a conversion in parliamentary procedures to Roberts rules from Sturgis rules. There is a cheat sheet included in the materials for this agenda item for use by the board. Counsel is also available to answer questions and provide points of order as needed. Staff will schedule a training for the board in the future on Roberts rules. In the meantime, staff asks that you use the cheat sheet and seek the advice of counsel as needed. Thank you for your time. I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to check to see if we have any public comment on this.
No public comment.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Mize. And do we have any questions from the board? Supervisor Cottrell.
Yeah, I first want to say thank you to staff for working on this. I think combining three documents into one and making things briefer is always good. Can you give us a quick overview of Roberts versus Sturgis? Like, what are we gaining? What are we losing?
Supervisor, thank you for your question. I think the primary advantage to Roberts over Sturgis is that it's a more easily-recognized format for the public and for other interested observers to follow. Sturgis is not something that is used very widely, where Roberts follows a very recognizable format for a public meeting of motion, discussion, and vote. I believe that covers it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I just wanted to ask if we could get at some point a list of the commission, the board commissions and committees with their liaison departments and the department contact? Because I think sometimes we don't, you know, we have a commission or a committee, and we're like, who is that particular department contact? So that would be really helpful. And then I did want to mention to my colleagues that please do take some time to review the summary of Roberts rules, especially note the making of motions and the board discussion, as these are different than our current practices, and I will endeavor to follow this as closely as possible. But please jump in when you notice that we're off track, so it'll take us a little while to get used to it. Okay, Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. I did have a question for staff that I'm going to share with my colleagues in looking at, it is Section, page nine of the policy, let's go there. So page nine, and it's subsection F, and it's the Great Wine Capital's General Assembly. And I asked why this was pure. This is very out of the ordinary. It is actually our only appointment that is listed in our policy, and the reason being is that it is an appointment to a, I'm going to let you say it, there, punting.
Thank you, Supervisor. As far as I can tell, the reason that this is specifically included is that it is the only appointment, which is to an organization that is non-governmental and non-quasi-governmental. All of the other appointments of your board to external organizations are to governmental or quasi-governmental organizations.
Thank you. And so with that, I think that there is an opportunity for us to make this process more consistent with our other appointments, which happen in January, that are to governmental or quasi-governmental entities. And I'm going to be supportive of this current revision, but this comes with a referral to staff, that this is going to need to come back to us. Next year, we have our agreement with the Tourist Improvement District that is coming before us. That's the TOT. That's the TOT, pass-through money, which is actually then goes to Visit Napa Valley. Visit Napa Valley pays for part of our costs of the supervisors and our staff representatives to attend. I think that in order to gain more transparency and consistency and to remove this from our policy, we would be best served to include within our agreement with the Tourism Improvement District, the guidelines for that contribution for our attendance, and, and therefore allow us to include this appointment into our January slate that we do with supervisors every single year. So that would be my recommendation, sticking with this, but moving forward, making it actually a governmental appointment that goes through the, the TID agreement. Thank you.
Any comments? I agree with that also. I'd like to see that happen. Okay. Well, then, I will be looking for a motion to adopt the resolution with the changes that were noted in the correction memo. Anyone?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Cottrell, second by Ramos. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mize. Appreciate all your work on that. Okay, we are going to, I'm going to ask if everybody's okay moving forward. Does anyone need a break? Comfort break? No? Okay, we're going to move forward now with 11F. Ms. Persenyo. This is to adopt a resolution to waive the 180-day wait period as defined in Government Code, Section 7522.56 and 21224, to hire and extra help retired annuitants. And Ms. Persenyo, thank you for joining us.
Good morning. Christine Persenyo, the Director of Human Resources, and this request is for a resolution to waive the 180-day waiting period to hire a CALPER's retired annuitant. In January 2013, the CALPER's Pension Reform Act made substantial changes to public employee pension laws in California. One change prohibits a retired annuitant from returning to work for a CALPER's employer for a period of not less than 180 days from the date of the retirement unless a governing body adopts a resolution to waive the wait period. This exception allows an employer to hire a retired annuitant immediately based on the county's requirement for that employee's specialized skill. Carol Haynes is the retired Deputy Chief Fiscal Officer for Health and Human Services, effective August 2nd, and Ms. Hayne served as a Deputy Chief Financial Officer from February 2008 until her retirement. This position requires specialized knowledge and skills in the social services claiming and funding arena that is critical to the continued operation of social service programs for Health and Human Services. And recruitment is in process. We are engaged with the Public Search Recruitment Firm, and depending on that successful hire, this recruitment is expected, this position is expected to last no longer than six months.
All right, great, thank you so much. Do we have any public comment on this item? Or on the phone? All right, I will go ahead and bring it back to the board.
Move approval of the resolution.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Gregory, a second by Cottrell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Persenyo.
Thank you.
We do not have any public hearings for special districts. We will move to public hearing 13A. Ms. Persenyo, you're going to stay with us for this one. This is to conduct a public hearing to consider the intent to adopt an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.04, and amending Article One, Section 2.04.040 of the Napa County Code regarding salary rate and adding language requiring a periodic salary review. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and Ms. Persenyo, if you could present? Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so this hearing is an intention to adopt a county code and ordinance change to Chapter 2.04.040. As you may recall, in early August of this year, we provided an information item regarding preliminary management compensation reports, which showed that the compensation for the Board of Supervisors is severely under market median. For background, the salary of, for the members of the Board of Supervisors is set by county ordinance and county policy for management compensation. Specifically for the Board of Supervisors, the county code and ordinance states that the current salary be set at a percentage of the Superior Court Judge salary. From July 1993 through February 1999, that percentage was 34% of the Superior Court Judge's salary. The increase to 45% was in 1999 and to 47.09% in August of 2005, and that percentage has not changed since 2005. We also provided further background to explain the three ways in which management compensation is surveyed. The first is a benchmark comparable to maintain compensation no more than 4% below the market median of our comparable agencies. Our practice is that if the salary survey indicates that the classification is more than 4% below the market median, a salary adjustment to market median will be recommended to the Board of Supervisors. Additionally, we compare management salaries for internal alignment and for compaction. The county typically reviews management salaries following labor negotiations, and specifically, this review is used to ensure that manager salaries are at least 10% higher than the highest paid, their highest-paid employee. Because the members of Board of Supervisors are now directly supervising their staff assistants, the salary review was also necessary. For this salary survey, the comparable jurisdictions were Contra Costa County, Marin County, Santa Cruz County, Solano County, and Sonoma County. If you could go to the next slide, please. This slide shows what the, the results of that comparable market study, and as you can see, the Board of Supervisors' current salary is more than 33% below the market median. This request intends to amend the Napa County Code 2.04.040 to increase the Board of Supervisor's salary calculation percentage from 47.09% to 63% of Superior Court Judges to bring the benchmark classification within the 4% market median of those comparable agencies, and to address the issue of compaction described. Further, this amendment change to the ordinance requires a review of the Board of Supervisor's salary at least every five years in order to maintain that market median. Upon approval today, this item will return to the Board of Supervisors on September 24th, 2024, on the consent calendar for approval. Upon that approval, the salary changes will be implemented for the first pay period following a 60-day waiting period, which is approximately the first pay period in October. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, great. I'd like to see first if there's any public comment on this item. Anything on the phone? Okay, I will then close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Do I have any questions, comments? All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Cottrell.
Second.
And a second from Supervisor Ramos. Do I have any discussion? I'm moving, I'm moving towards Robert's rules here, so. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so did we get ayes from everybody? Yeah, I just didn't hear. Okay. All right, thank you.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Persenyo, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. And it, I think, no, you're, you might as well stay here. You've got, you've got another one. We're just going to keep you up here. So we're moving on to 13B, which is also a public hearing. This is to consider the intent to adopt an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.100, and amending Article Three, Section 2.100.181 of the Napa County Code regarding persons required to submit to a federal Bureau of Investigation background check and renewal requirements, and adopt a resolution amending Napa County Policy Manual, Section 37Y. So we will open the public hearing and hear again from Ms. Persenyo.
Thank you. So this hearing is the intent to adopt a county code and ordinance change to Section 2.100.181 for fingerprints and background checks. For background, all new county employees are live-scanned, fingerprinted prior to beginning employment with the county. Human Resources receives the background check results and receives subsequent arrest information. The probation department uses the California law enforcement telecommunication systems, or CLUTS, a computer network that connects public safety agencies across the state to criminal histories and driver records and other databases, and has strict statutes to maintain and administer access. All persons with access to CLUTS equipment or information from the CLUTS database or to criminal offender record information are required to undergo an additional background security clearance. Further, access to CLUTS requires the department to have direct access to results of the, of the additional background checks. The probation department has received state and federal approval to complete this requirement. This ordinance change also requires updates to the Napa County Policy 37Y for criminal record security policy and procedures. These changes impact all probation department staff, including volunteers, contractors, and other county employees that access the facility unescorted, such as custodial and maintenance staff, who must, who must be re-live-scanned as a result of these required changes. The amendment to Napa County Code and the county policy will institute the required additional background checks and give probation approval to maintain access to the CLUTS database. Further, these changes require that employees with access to federal tax information receive additional background checks, and that the same additional background checks is completed every 10 years. Internal Revenue, Internal Revenue Code, Publication 1075, requires that reinvestigation be conducted within five years from the date of the previous background check. And the recommended update to the ordinance brings county code and county policy in alignment with IRS and state of California requirements. The county has met its obligation to meet and confer with the affected bargaining units for these required updates, and this request intends to amend this code and the policy together. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. And do we have any public comment on this item? Any on the phone? All right, we're going to close the public hearing and bring that back to the board.
I'm sorry, may I?
Yes.
If approved today, the item will return to you at the next meeting on September 24th, 2024, on the consent calendar for adoption for the ordinance change and policy update.
Right, this is the, the intent to adopt that we're looking for. All right. Anybody?
So moved.
All right. Motion by Gregory, second. Second by Cottrell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, you are now free to go, Ms. Persenyo. Thank you for all of your presentations. All right, we are going to move on to 13C. This is also a public hearing. This is the introduction and intent to adopt an ordinance amending the Napa County Code for Titles 17 and 18, to bring the code into alignment with current state law and the county's recently-certified housing element to the general plan. Mr. Hawks is here. We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and Mr. Hawks, welcome, and please go right ahead.
Thank you, Chair, Honorable Members of the Board of Supervisors. Trevor Hawks, I'm joined today by Director Brian Bordona, Director of Special Projects, David Morrison, Silver Darbignan with County Council, as well as Barbara Kautz with Gold Farben Littman, who's been our outside Housing Council throughout the housing element update process. This item before you, staff is requesting that the board hold a public hearing and consider a motion with an intent to adopt an ordinance which would amend Napa County Code, Titles 17 and 18, with the intent to bring the code into alignment with current state law and the county's recently-certified housing element to the general plan. The proposed ordinance includes, right after we finished the housing element and it was adopted and certified by the state or the state founded in compliance in February, staff began working on, you know, several of the action items that are contained in the housing element. The first one we brought to you and was adopted by the board in June of this year, which was the rezoning, the housing element rezoning ordinance. This is the next one, and these are the remainder of the code changes that we need to implement in order to implement the various action items that had code changes in them, which are objective H3G, H3J, and H5F, as well as items that are required under state law. We brought this proposed ordinance to the Planning Commission on July 17th, 2024, for a public workshop. We received no public comments at that time, although the Planning Commission did direct staff to revise the draft ordinance to require that medium residential care facilities obtain a use permit in the AP and AW zones, and we incorporated those changes as well as some other technical changes in the document before we brought it back to the Planning Commission on August 7th, 2024, where the Planning Commission unanimously recommended adoption of the ordinance to the Board of Supervisors. The, you know, if you look in the staff packet, there are four attachments. You have the clean ordinance, omnibus ordinance, as we're referring to it, an attachment A. There is a omnibus housing ordinance red line document, attachment B. And then you have the ordinance guide and summary. Ordinance guide is going to go through each of those objectives as they're laid out in the Programs table, Chapter Three of the housing element, and exactly what sections of the code we are modifying in order to implement that objective. And then the summary item also, or the summary document kind of just generally explains what we are, kind of a general summary of the change that's happening in each of those sections of the code in order to implement this item. And that about does it for, you know, my presentation here. You know, there's a lot of changes in this. I think it's about a, it's a over 70-page document of code changes. The red line document is almost up to 90 pages. It implements various things such as SB 9, SB 35, ADUs in the AP zone, and a number of other requirements that we know were in our housing element. So with that, I'll kind of end my presentation. Staff is here to answer any questions that you may have on the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public on this?
Can, can I, one more quick? There was a change memo yesterday that changed attachment B. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any public comment on the phone? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Do we have any questions or comments? Supervisor Cottrell?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hawks. I know this has been a huge project, and like you said, a ton of changes. So I guess one thing I would start with, and I spoke to our communications Deputy CEO about this, I'm wondering what we could do to publish something on the website that can give people a walkthrough of the changes. I don't know what that looks like, but I'd love for us to have something there because I know, talking to a colleague in Placer County, for example, they had their first incident of, or of a residential care facility being developed under these guidelines, which the state is telling us we need to do. And I think just, we're not going to be able to educate everyone at the same time, but having this, these changes out there, I think, would be helpful. So that, that's a, a comment and a referral I'd like to make. And then I had a question about, there's this component that says where we have farmworker housing, those centers can be converted to independent, in freestanding units, and which that makes a lot of sense to me. My question to you is, is there a mechanism to make sure that those don't then become converted to something else?
One second. Barbara Kautz may, might jump up and, and add to the second question there. With that conversion, of course, we would require farmworker deed restrictions on those housing units. That would maintain them in perpetuity. That would maintain them in perpetuity as farmworker, as only being able to be sold to qualifying farmworkers. I'd also like to just mention on the first item, the comment you made. Of course, Staff can work on that. There are, you know, some requirements within the program list from the housing element. So the SB 9 changes. We currently have a website, a webpage on the website for SB 9 that kind of generally talks about it. We're going to update that. We're also required, under the housing element, to produce maps for the public so that they know which properties qualify under SB 9. And then internally, we're getting Staff up and running on these code changes. We actually held a training last week on the ADU changes in the code so that the planning staff are, will be ready once this is, if it is implemented. Once it is implemented, Staff will be ready to assist the public as well.
Thank you for that, and I think it's helpful, particularly with SB 9. That's kind of a good basket to put all those changes. This is what SB 9 means for our county, type of thing. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I think we need to have public comments.
Oh, did I not ask for that? I did, okay. I asked for a public comment. And the, close the public hearing, that's okay. And I think we're ready for a vote. Supervisor Cottrell?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and Supervisor Gregory?
You know, second, just a brief discussion item. Just thank you, this is, looks like a small thing buried in our agenda today, but it's a huge upgrade to our housing, really, code, huge. It's been the same for a long, long time, so thank you for everybody involved.
Chair, if I may, that was a motion of intent to adopt?
Yes.
Okay, great. And also to Staff, I mean, when you look through it, the amount of dots and zeros and additions was impressive. So, thank you. It's a lot of work that goes into it and truly, it's my sincere hope that this gets us to the next step of addressing our dire housing needs, not just here, but in the region, so thank you.
Yeah, and I do think it's important, I think we're all trying to say much of the same thing, but that the public really understands that making these code changes, which, you know, are not super sexy necessarily when you're up here discussing them, but it does help us to meet our state and local goals when it comes to providing more housing for our communities. So, thank you, and this is a great step forward. So I have a motion from Supervisor Cottrell, I think. And did I get a second from Supervisor Gregory? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, great, this passes. Thank you so much, Mr. Hawks. Okay, we do not have any closed session today. We are to come back at 2:00 PM for public hearing. Is there anything you wanted to say about that in terms of?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, all right. Then we will be back at 2 o'clock. And everyone have a great morning.
This is all we need, actually.
It's okay.
I got this.
Hey, sir. Oh, we are on air? Yes, we are on air, everyone. So, welcome back. We are here for the 2 o'clock portion of our meeting. This is a public hearing. Pridmore Property General Plan Map Amendment P 1700135, rezone P 2000223, and use permit P 2000222. I will open the public hearing, and we will hear from Mr. Parker.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Michael Parker with Planning, Building and Environmental Services. As the Chair noted, the item before you today is a public hearing for the Pridmore Property General Plan Map Amendment, rezoning and use permit. Staff with the support of the applicant request that the Chair open the public hearing, accept public comment, and vote to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, September 24th at 9:00 a.m.
All right. Thank you very much. And I assume I'm taking public comment only on the continuance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Is there any public comment on the continuance? Anything on the phone? Okay, can someone make a motion?
Second.
All right. Motion by Pedrosa, second by Ramos. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Okay, we will now adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m.